Not on a school night.
One, two, three, four, five, six, five, six.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, call the meeting to order. Can I get an agenda approval if there's no changes or additions?
Mr. Chair, there were a couple of items that came in just after the deadline on Thursday. So they're on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure that we know about that. Item 6A, bad debt write-off from Natural Resource Management, and approved temporary liquor license for American Legion fishing derby. If we could do that right after the consent agenda, it shouldn't take much time. Both of these items would have been on the consent agenda if they would have, if we had resolved the issues earlier.
I'm going to go approve with those. Thank you, Dave. In a second. Dan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carried. Public input. Is there any public input today? Doesn't look like there's any. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Chair. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Okay, now it was...
Temporary liquor license.
Temporary liquor license.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I received an application for a temporary liquor license on the 31st. I guess that was yesterday. American Legion posts 212 here in Park Rapids, and they are going to have a derby on Fish Hook Lake this weekend. So we are asking for your approval on this temporary liquor license.
Second. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will move on to employee recognition. And for the Sheriff's Department, we have Allison Deegan began the position of Deputy Sheriff on January 24th, 2022. Thank you, Allison. And that looks like all we have as far as employee recognition. We will move on to highway and survey.
Good morning, Commissioners. First on our agenda, we've got approved the addition of some brining equipment to our plow truck that we ordered back in 2021. This truck is still under construction, waiting on the chassis to be delivered for the snow and ice equipment. And we got to talking with that other truck that we had received some grant funding through the SWCD for putting the brine equipment for the Leech Lake watershed area. We talked to the supplier for this one and asked what it would take to add the brining equipment to this truck. And as you'll notice, the low quote that we got was $7,956, which is substantially less to do it at this point in the build of the truck rather than do a retrofit. And while we're still kind of learning how that brining is going to work and where the proper application is on that other truck, we do think that this is a direction that we look to move. So I would ask for approval to add this on. This is state contract pricing, so it is the only quote. And Burt's is the one who's doing the equipment install already.
So that would be a Lakes truck, plow truck?
This, well, we think this is going to be in the Park Rapids area, actually. It depends on, we're having some issues with one truck and wondering if that's the one that we're going to replace with this new truck. It was different than our original intent.
Thank you, sir.
Who moved to approve? Thank you, Dave.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item, we got review and approve final payment to Design Electric, Inc. out of St. Cloud. This is for project SAP 029-628-003. This was our truck route signing and lighting project. So this final payment is the portion for the actual lighting that was done a little while back. Final contract payment would be $8,323.70. And heard good feedback from various people, most notably the potato plant down there. Very happy that they got some lighting at that intersection. It was a very dark area, and this is definitely an improvement.
I like that. It's amazing where you're driving along at night and you know the intersection's coming up, and then there's that light.
Yeah, and this was a nice project. We did it under LPP, which is Local Partnership Project with the Minnesota DOT. So they footed the bill for most, if not all, of this. We'll see how it all shakes out. But there was an extra $35,000 that we used to essentially do a project on the trunk highway that MINDOT wasn't going to get to necessarily, and so we took the lead on it and got it accomplished.
Thank you. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. Second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item, we got review and approve quote for camera system and key card access at Public Works. Now, if you recall, it wasn't that long ago I had you approve a low quote through Pro-Custom and Security LLC out of Detroit Lakes. And following the acceptance of that quote, it was brought to our attention that there's what's called an NDAA compliance on camera systems, which is what the US, from a federal standpoint, put into place a little while back, requiring that the camera system be NDAA compliant for various reasons of where certain cameras were made and what kind of capability they have of being hacked into. And so I ran this through Rob and IT to verify that this is a requirement. It more leans towards federal money, and there's possibly some issues with state funding. And we just thought that it would be better off to have them re-quote with cameras that met the NDAA compliance. And then we don't have to worry about that, and obviously those are going to be a little more expensive. So I'm bringing this back for reapproval on it. Same company, still low quote. The second quote that came in from Allstate Communications already included the NDAA compliant cameras. So we are comparing apples to apples here, in my opinion. But Pro-Custom and Security is still by far low with the total amount of the quote, $75,012.40. And that's for both the card access and the camera system.
Jed, how much did that change, then?
About $11,000 for ours.
And those two quotes we have in front of us are the same exact product?
Well, they're the product that those companies supply based upon what our request was for what we needed for the key card access and the cameras. And I think what we had talked about before is you have a big variety in the quality of cameras and the clarity that they provide. And we think that what Pro-Custom and Security is providing as a quote here more than meets what we're looking for from a camera standpoint.
A big price difference.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion for approval.
In a second.
I will second.
Thank you, Chair. Any further discussing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In our last item, we've got review and approve quote for the purchase of a drone. This was a budgeted item in our 2022 budget that we've been looking at for quite a while. And we know that there are certain things that we can use these drone for currently. And we're hoping that this can branch out to a lot of different items that we can use it for, primarily survey work. So the drone that we had quoted actually does RTK work, which is the GPS-type data collection that we do in survey work. Frontier Precision is the main supplier. They are under the state contract. That's who we went to for this quote. We just got a demonstration the other day from the Minnesota DOT that's using a lot of these drones for bridge inspection, preliminary surveys, and whatnot. And so I do have one change to it, and I'll kind of explain that. I think the packet you've got should have a quote to Frontier Precision out of St. Cloud, Minnesota, $14,683.99. Upon further review of their quote, they had a few items in there that didn't match the state contract price. So I asked them to redo it, and it ended up going up a little bit. It looks like $130 or $140 with a low quote of $14,815.49. And the biggest thing is, is they matched the state contract price for the actual drone and the training. But one thing that's necessary for this is a license for the mapping program. And under the state contract, there's a perpetual license that was $4,241.50 versus an annual license for two other devices. It was like $3,500. So long-term, this is going to be a much better deal than what we originally had quoted, and we don't have to worry about relicensing that mapper. All is good. They would just send us an annual update for it, but there would be no cost. And so this quote now, that matches all of the state contract price. So it'd be $14,815.49 that I would ask for approval.
And do these also have to be registered with the PAGA?
Correct. And our staff will go through some training for it. It's a UAS 107 training, and we'll get multiple people authorized to fly this drone.
I'd like to see that sometime.
Absolutely.
We'll move to approve the low quote.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion?
So what's the distance from the operator? How far out can that go?
I think that the manufacturer of the drone will say like three miles. The MINDOT employee that came to give us the demonstration said it's far less than that. They've tried, and these are really neat. The technology on them is getting so good that they have sensors to avoid, you know, hitting certain things and whatnot. And then there's a return-to-home button that just all of a sudden takes over control of your drone, and it'll bring it right back to you. But you have to have line of sight to your drone. And so that would be very, very difficult in reaching out to three miles.
That's how it is with recreation drones. You've got to have line of sight.
Yep.
I've got a drone.
I hate this stuff. It's regulated by the FAA, too.
Correct. And that stuff, that we'll learn through the training that's required to operate these. Yep. 400 feet, I think, is the limit that you can fly them.
To be able to spot a beaver, you know, beaver?
Possibly. Sure. Yeah.
There are areas of less than 400.
Yes.
You know, I'm flying pretty close to that airport there. Tells me to get out of there or fly lower.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, you have to do a pre-flight plan.
Yep.
It's not a lot different than being a pilot as far as your pre-planning. And you have to understand those areas, and there's websites to go to to look at where those restricted airfields are.
They are becoming a pretty good tool, too, with a good HD camera on them. You can get in places that are more difficult for people to climb around and get into that aren't safe to get to either.
Absolutely right. Yeah, measuring stockpiles or, yeah, certain precarious situations that would lead you, that would allow you to gather enough information that would lead you to maybe explore something a little bit further. So something doesn't get overlooked. Absolutely.
It also can save money because you might be speculating what a problem is. You might have to hire a crew, have them mobilize, come up here, you know, crawl under a bridge to see if it's it, to find out that it's not the problem. Why, you just spend a lot of money to find out it wasn't a problem. Now with the drone, you can just identify it is a problem. So now, you know, bringing the crew up, you're spending good money to fix it.
Absolutely. Yeah. What we saw the other day, MINDOT uses just a little bit different drone. It's the same manufacturer of the drone, but a little bit smaller than what we're ordering. And we were amazed at the stability. We actually flew it inside the transfer station the other day. And there was no concern with anything, the walls, the ceiling, the equipment that was operating. Very, very stable. Took some pictures with it to see what kind of quality we were looking at. I think it's going to be very advantageous for some of the bridge inspection that some of the larger bridges, like down on Cassaf 15 by our office, you can get right up in there and take a look at those things without using, say, like a snoop or truck or anything. So we're pretty excited about having that.
Motion is second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. It's all we got.
On another note, 17 and 20, are you looking at getting some permanent lighting?
17 and 20 or 11?
Well, both.
11's got lighting.
11 for sure. Yep. And 20 has one. Going left.
Okay.
But are you looking into that?
Well, we need to get into our second phase of our County Road Safety Plan, which should bring some of those out. We've put lighting at all of the intersections that were identified under the first safety plan that we can use federal funding towards. But we are scheduled to be in a second phase.
That second phase might have stop sign illumination.
Very well could. Rumble strips, stop sign illumination, additional lighting. But it is taking a little different look at more of the geometrics of some of the intersections, not necessarily some of those easier, lower-cost fixes. But, yep, it'll explore all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Natural Resource Management.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this item would have been on the agenda at our last meeting, except I held it up to see if we had a policy related to writing off bad debt, which we don't at this point. So I'd like us to consider a long-term policy, but I don't want us to nod, dot the i's and cross the t's relative to this issue, which is why it didn't, it was originally formatted for the January meeting, so when we published this meeting, it didn't. Didn't come up, so.
Morning.
Good morning. We have two timber sale overruns that we have been trying to collect on since about 2016. We've run these through the county attorney's office and have failed to receive any adequate funding from the original sources on this. So what we're asking is that we can write these two bad debts off just to clear up our books and get them off the books. You know, I've been here now 11 years, and this is the only two that we've ever had. So I think we're doing fairly well on collecting any of the debts that we have out there. So we have two debts, one at $394.02 and the other one at $878.94.
And I assume these loggers don't buy timber from us anymore?
Neither one of them do, no.
Or we're restricting that?
I think both of them pretty much are out of business, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll still move.
Thank you, Tom. I'll second it.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Solid waste.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I just have one item this morning. I guess it's going to be pretty much similar to what Jed had brought up under his agenda. So it's to review and approve a quote for a camera system. Again, working with the same two companies that Jed had, went back after discussing with IT and wanted to make sure the cameras were NDAA compliant. So that had adjusted the original quote we had from Pro-Custom and Security to $51,168.37. The quote that we had at the last meeting was $40,428.15. So this would be updating the quote to meet that compliance, so.
So would this just be in the south transfer station, or would it include it in north as well?
We already have cameras up at the north station, so we're pretty set up there.
Anything quality compliance?
It's a different company. I guess I'm not sure, you know, that was done a few years ago. So I'm not sure what the standard was then, so.
The cameras at the north station, though, are working, doing the job you want them to do?
Yep.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Josh.
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Veteran Services.
Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning. I'm here today requesting funds from the Minnesota Department of Veteran Affairs for fiscal year '22 Operation enhancement grant. $10,000. We'll be using it for outreach.
I'll go approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. It's great to see you all.
Good to see you, Jerry.
Sheriff's Department.
I'm kind of of the opinion that the last item and the next two could have been on the consent agenda but weren't submitted that way.
Okay.
So I would just read them out and ask if there was any questions related to the resolution authorizing the agreement to the snowmobile safety grant.
I'll move to approve that. Thank you, Dave. Second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Is there any opening?
It was Dan's vote.
Are you approving?
Yes, I'm approving. Sorry, my chair went downhill.
And then the second item would be the same thing except for the OHV safety grant.
I'll move to approve.
Second? Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we have the assessor.
The next item actually requires discussion.
I'm the last one here, so.
Do you have lots of time for you?
We're on the record to be the shortest meeting ever.
So, good morning, everyone. I am here this morning, excuse me, to ask for your approval to purchase Tyler Technologies Field Mobile. Just a little bit of background on that. I know we talked about this the last time I was here. The local assessors, we would always print out these field cards for them, put them in three-ring binders, and then they would take those out to do their work. Well, as we were doing splits within our office, we discovered that the the field cards that Tyler Technology provides aren't even relatively close to the field cards that Avenue used to provide. They're more of a summary, whereas Avenue had a lot more detail in them. And all of these details were needed by the local assessors to actually do their work out in the field. So I had a discussion with Tyler Technologies. This is the only field card that is available to us. We could alter the field card, but it would take several months and several thousand dollars to accomplish that. So our original goal was to implement Field Mobile sometime in the near future for our local assessors. We had actually hoped to have just a little bit more of a cushion as far as time goes to do that. But a lot of our local assessors start their work out in the field in May, June, that timeframe. And so we need to come up with a solution in order to provide them the the things that they need in order to do their work. So we talked to Tyler Technologies again about this Field Mobile, and I discussed it with Jeff, and I also discussed it with Lauren because we were looking at the cost of the Field Mobile. Now Lauren has, she has a Recorder's Compliance Fund. And after discussing this with Lauren, there is, along with Field Mobile, there is a workflow process which she is very interested in. It's kind of like a package deal. And that is included in the quote that we had from Tyler because you can't get Field Mobile without workflow. Now, Workflow is a program that I'm not real familiar with because we haven't really, we haven't used it at all, but we do have a demonstration coming up on February 14th, I believe it is. Tyler's going to do a thorough process on that workflow. And Lauren is very interested in the workflow because the workflow, let's see. It's a program that tracks all the tasks within our office, and it will also track a lot of the tasks within Lauren's office as well. And maybe a little bit with the GIS department. So anyways, it tracks all the tasks so that you can see the progress of where all of the work is located. And then it also ensures that all the assignments are being completed. Because Field Mobile and Workflow are one product, you have to have the one, you can't do Field Mobile without the workflow. Lauren is very interested in moving forward with this. And she has conveyed to me that there are sufficient funds in the Recorder's Compliance Fund to pay for the implementation of Field Mobile and Workflow. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I did speak with Rob regarding the tablets the local assessors would need in order to use Field Mobile. And the IT department has eight Surface Pros available that were used for a short time by another department that would be available for the local assessors to use. All right. Any questions?
Eight tablets in, is going to be enough for all the assessors?
It's enough for all of our local assessors. We would likely need to purchase one for our office as well.
So I would just add a couple of points to what Jamie said. So when they would print the field cards for the local assessors and send those books out, they would all go out there and do all their work manually, then bring it back to the office. And our staff would typeity, 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 input all those books, books of books. So our intention was to go to a mobile field card or this Field Mobile anyway at one point because then all the work is done out in the field, and there's, that redundancy of data entry is eliminated. So this was the intention. The source of funds would have been the same two years down the road as it will be now relative to using those Recorder Compliance Funds. It's one more thing to put on the staff to get done and rolled out. But it's the best choice to make at this point in time.
So eventually, when this is up and running well, then the staff will have time to do other things. That's...
Someone's got to recheck their work.
That's our goal. And then we would also have to do proofing. And then we would also have more time available to actually go out in the field and to do those spot checks that we haven't done for quite some time because we just haven't had time. So when local assessors do their work, it is a common practice for staff within the assessor's office to actually... to actually go out and verify that that work is being done and that it is being done correctly. So, so that will free up some time for us to be able to do that. Thank you.
The local assessors are on board with this?
Some of them are not aware of it yet.
It's technology.
I've talked to a couple of them. There is going to be a learning curve. The quote, I don't know if you looked at it real well, but there is some, there is some travel included in the contract, so staff from Tyler Technologies will be coming for training for the local assessors. I hope they receive it well. It will be a different way of doing their work, you know, as, as opposed to them taking their field cards with a pen and writing down the changes. They will be entering those changes in the tablets, and they can do that out in the field. They, they check out parcels, is what they call it, so they will check out parcels, go out and do their work, and then check those parcels back in. And, and honestly, we don't have the system down completely yet because we haven't worked with the locals with it yet, but I personally feel that it will be an improvement over what we're doing right now. I've talked to other county assessors and other county assessors that have been using Tyler Technologies for a while. They have implemented field mobile, and they've been using field mobile for several years, and they, they have had success with it, so.
So some of the townships, once you get in their town halls, they don't have internet access?
That's correct.
So will you, will they be able, the assessors be able to save the documents so it can come up in a file without having internet access, or will the public have to have a different meeting with them, for them to access their records?
So are you talking about the local boards of appeal and equalization? Yeah. They will, we, we're not planning to offer a virtual meeting this year.
No, I don't mean virtual, but in our, like the township where I live?
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to access the internet there.
It is.
And the township doesn't pay for it because there's no point.
Right.
So when I go to the board of, or when I used to be a township officer, and people would come and they'd have questions, Lauren would just take his notes out.
Right.
So will the assessors have, will they be able to save their stuff to the tablet so they can get their notes out without using an internet access?
So, field mobile actually does not have internet access. They, it's my.
Everything's on a cloud, like a phone?
It's my understanding that they check out these parcels, and they are available on the tablet, and the tablet does not need internet access in order to, in order for the local assessors to complete their work.
Must upload when they come back in?
Yes.
So they, so they should have, they should have access to the same information, just in electronic format?
Yeah, so if they're going out for one of the local boards, they would check out or upload all, the entire township into that.
Okay.
Surface Pro, and that's why we would need, the county assessor's office would also need a Surface Pro additionally to, for our work as well. Yeah, and then after that board is done, they can transfer that back into our system.
So then how will you download the previous years' worth, many years' worth of information they have on a certain parcel?
So, we do have that available in Tyler.
Okay.
So when they, when we transferred, or excuse me, converted, did this conversion, they converted several years.
Oh, they, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly how many off the top of my head, but they did convert several years' worth of data.
So that's already all in there?
It's in there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm assuming the, it's a three-year contract based on the, the numbers here?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
The other question I would have then is, is the field mobile workflow going to give you the detail you need to reasonably replace what you currently have? Because you talked about, about those cards right now having a lot more detail.
So those, so the field cards are not going to change, and I'm actually okay with that because it's more of a summary. It gives everybody the vital information on a parcel, but it doesn't drill down to the details that, that the local assessors need to do their work. But we actually have our property record cards available on, on the county website, and sometimes if you give people too much information, it's, it's not always a good thing. So I'm okay with more of a summary. Those field cards aren't going to change. When I talk to Tyler Technologies, all of the counties that have had Tyler for several years have never even requested that these field cards be changed. It has worked very well for their needs, and, and I don't really see a need to change those property record cards.
So we might be the last people that are using the hard cards for that purpose rather than electronic format. We're certainly not the only ones of the Tyler in our region who would have proposed to use hard cards instead of the electronic record.
So you're going to eliminate the hard cards?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And the other question, I'll save for later, but I do have one more before you.
So I, I have a question.
Sure.
I, I know this isn't up to the county, but if, if an assessor decides, eh, you know what, I've done this long enough, I'm not interested in the conversion. So they let the township know they're not going to do it, and the township can't find anyone to hire. How much time do they have before they come and tell the county, we're going to, we want to hire you to do it?
I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not really sure of that deadline. They do have until, oh.
Yeah, I don't remember. I know they pass a motion to approve.
I want to say it's in like in November, they have until.
Last year.
They have until then to actually have someone hired and, and doing the work. I would think that they would notify us immediately. I can't imagine a township not doing that because they would need to, they would need to have a plan in place in order to get that work done, so.
And you're okay if they can't find someone and it reverts back to the county?
Does automatically, I believe, does it?
Does it do automatically? Just, so the county has to cover that. I know that happened at a different township.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In the, in the short term, they probably contract with another existing assessor to.
Yeah.
Cover it in the short term while they're looking.
So we actually had a situation similar to that this year.
Oh, this year you did too?
In a very, I mean, it wasn't a lot of work. We had one township whose local assessor did not have the qualifications to do their commercial properties. So myself and Maria, we went out and we assessed all of the commercial properties within that specific township, and it was with the understanding that their local assessor was going to have their licensure completed by June of this year. So that does happen. We, we will just have to address it when, as it happens, so, yeah.
You contracted with that township?
Yes, we did. I actually, I took a contract from a previous year, and I drafted it, and I took it down to Jonathan, and he approved it, and, and then I, I went to one of their local boards and had them sign it, and then we just moved forward with that process. So, yeah, it does happen.
So how long do you think it'll take time-wise to pay for this then? I mean, based on the savings? I can't imagine it'll be too long.
Just in the paper alone?
The double entry savings alone, too.
Yeah, because we actually used a printing company in Pemiji to, to do that initial printing of all of the field cards. We had to pay them to do that. And then as the local assessors would bring, bring their books in, we would enter the data for them, and then we would reprint those field cards in-house with the new changes. And then they would take that back, they would proof it, and then they would, you know, if they found something that they, you know, didn't like the way it changed or something, then they would come back to us, and then we would, you know, make changes as they, as they requested, so.
Yes, Sue?
So is there another set of eyes? That gives a couple sets of eyes on the process, right?
That's correct.
Now, when they're entering it, they're the only ones that see it.
So that's pretty typical in assessor's offices, where they have either locals or they have staff appraisers. So that is where the spot checking comes into play, where another staff member would go out to that parcel and verify that the work has been completed and that it is accurate. And, and we don't look at every single one, obviously. I mean, it's just, isn't possible, but that spot checking would be necessary, and that would be very important to do once field mobile goes into play.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Can I have a second?
Second.
And, thank you, Dan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One other question.
Yes.
In that Tyler conversion process, how's it going? Are you getting, getting the problems resolved?
It's, it's, we're struggling right now, but we do have a deadline coming up to, in the past, we have always sent out our evaluation notices with the tax statements. We do plan to continue with that this year. We actually looked at maybe moving it back a little bit, but the cost was just too much. It would, it was at least ten thousand dollars to buy us two or three weeks of time, and it just wasn't worth it, in my opinion, to spend that much money on, on that. So, yeah, we are, we're struggling, but we're, we're working.
Are they resolving the issues that you, you run into?
They are, but it's a very, very time-consuming process. Very, very, it's not going nearly as fast as I had hoped. So, but we, it, it, there is a possibility that we may have to put in a little bit of overtime in order to meet our deadline, but I have, I've already talked to my staff. We have, we have staff meetings almost every week just to make sure everything is moving forward, and my staff has, has told me that they would be willing to work overtime in the event that that is needed. So my, my staff is amazing. I have wonderful, wonderful staff. I never could have gotten this far without them.
Yeah, and, and I know we all appreciate that. The part I'm concerned about is making sure Tyler is doing its, its job to resolve its problem.
They are. They are.
Yeah, great.
They are, so, yeah. All right, thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and I will move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, too, for putting in the extra effort.
I, I will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've had several conversations about picking up the pieces relative to this Tyler implementation because I think there's been a lot of, and it's, it, that's why Jamie talked about having talked with Rob before going with this field mobile and verifying that, is I'm asking everybody to make sure that we're involving everybody in these conversations. Right now, we're picking up the pieces and having to finish a project that somebody else started. It will be good when it's done. This is the current technology that everybody else is using. One of the biggest challenges to one of these operational changes is giving up the way we used to do it in order to use the new tool effectively, and it's a real mindset change. We have a couple more to do relative to that. We'll be talking about those later, but when you made the comment about getting this being the record for the fastest meeting, I knew, I knew we weren't going to get there. I knew that wasn't going to happen. I have a couple of things on my update. One is you have a copy of the new per diem form, and Denise will be emailing that to you as well, and it is a fillable PDF, or it's a fillable Excel spreadsheet form. So if you save the Excel spreadsheet and you complete it and, and print it as a PDF and email the PDF to me, that'll be clean. It'll do all the calculation for you. If you want to fill it all out and print it and sign it and give it to me, that's fine. If you want to continue to work with blank forms, we're fine with that, too. The only thing I would note is that the mileage rate for 2022 went to fifty-eight and a half cents. Also note that the, the meetings in the list are on a drop-down box, so it may be, it may take a little bit to try to find them, but we try to use the same terminology that was in the committee list. So if you find something that you're submitting per diem for that's not on the list, then that tells us we need to update the list. We'll try to keep those two things reconciled. If it ends up being more of a problem than it's worth, then we can go back, but.
So do you want Denise copied, only emailed back to you, or how do you want it handled?
I'm still handling the per diems myself directly. She's just been providing the forms and keeping us up to date with that, so.
They look really nice, the form. It's very detailed.
And fortunately, not very many of you have to read my writing at any given point in time, but everything I can do electronically, I do for the sake of others.
No, it's, it's very nice.
Related to the committee list, I reached out, I, I didn't reach out really hard. I reached out through their email contact form to Gazeebe Resource Center and did not get a response relative to the additional materials the board had asked, so you'll notice that they weren't on the list to approve for this year going forward. So by not taking affirmative action, we didn't take any action relative to Gazeebe this year, and I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that.
S W C D turned them down again for this year.
So that, we might have been there anyway if they would have given us the information.
And just to remind the board, in the consent agenda, we, one of the committees was dissolved. Yeah.
A I S.
A I S, yeah. It was no longer needed.
The advisory.
And then administratively, relative to the executive branch pulling the emergency temporary standard and that not being carried forward, the under advisement of the county attorney, the county has, is, is going to or has destroyed the, the medical data that we collected relative to vaccine status, just so you know. We, we had a couple of conversations, it's come up a couple of times relative to redistricting, and I just want to put the, the markers out there again. February fifteenth, we're supposed to get information related to the state and federal districts for, for congressional and representative districts. The local authorities, primarily the city of Park Rapids, has until March twenty-ninth to complete their work relative to precincts. And then our deadline would be April twenty-sixth to have the county commissioner districts done. Kay and I will be working together. She has a lot of responsibilities, the auditor, as laid out in the statute, of notifying and coordinating with the other local districts if anything's going to change. The degree to which anything has to change is really dependent on how fine a pencil the city uses relative to balancing the precincts. And I don't know if you want to carry that forward, possibly at the March work session, that we could go through and identify what's going on then, because we can't do any of our work, really get the final numbers, but we could go, we could walk through the process at the March work session, just so everybody knows what's happening, what our requirements are for public notice, what we're required to communicate to the township officials, et cetera.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Does the, the state do the final approval of these, or? Once either, either this board or your appointed commission makes a recommendation, who gives the final?
The county board has final approval unless there is a challenge from the public for the commissioner districts.
And the state accepts whatever the board.
Yep. At some point, you're going to be certifying that it meets all the criteria. You know, if you look back to 2010, the one, the one thing that I understand is if you submit a plan that shows a deviation from the standard of less than five percent for all of the commissioner districts, and you address the issues of contiguous and regular, then it's beyond appeal or reproach by public. If you meet the standard of less than ten percent, then there is still the possibility that the public could appeal. And with the numbers that we have of twenty-two thousand population and forty-two hundred roughly needed for the, for each commissioner. for each commissioner district, there can be a lot of variation. It's really hard to get them right down to those numbers, so I, I understand how that happened in 2010 relative to, you know, one at 9% and one really close. So that, that's, in general terms, that's what I understand, that we have to meet the 10%, 5% if we can, regular and contiguous to the best of our ability. The precincts and the annexation that creates the irregularity in the city boundaries is just something we have to work with. We can't smooth that out. They did that, so. I did talk to Angel and they're aware and I think their plan is to balance the, the precincts, but when I told her when I looked at the numbers, I, you know, it was 48, 52 on the two precincts and now it's 45, 55. She said, "Well, that's not as bad as I thought it was." And I said, "Yes, it is. The number needs to be better for us to have better results relative to commissioner boundaries."
Which side is most?
I don't know. Without, I'm not looking at the data. I'm just, I'm, I didn't come prepared to have a conversation because we don't have all the data yet.
Yeah.
But I wanted to remind people of the dates.
No.
And we'll put it on the March work session.
I would take some of yours.
And then the next item would be relative to Heritage Living Center. We had a Heritage Living Center board. I'm going to let the commissioners who there talk about it, but an update relative to the brokerage agreement is I am working with the attorneys that we contracted with to do the title work and make sure that everything's good and authority and I just got an email back from him that says they need two more pieces of paper from us, a ground lease agreement between the county and Heritage Living Center from 2014 and just one or two other pieces of material before we can have a conversation relative to the title work and the ownership. And then we'll hopefully know a, a firm path forward before the end of the week relative to being able to sign off on that brokerage agreement and get things moving.
So Jeff, if, if all this stuff is done, because we've already approved Hired Them, then Ted can sign it. We don't have to wait before another meeting, correct?
The, the, no, the, yes, you're right. The, the motion was to approve the brokerage agreement pending attorney review, so as soon as we walk through the attorney hoops, we'll sign off on the agreement.
I, I get paid from Prime West. I don't get paid.
The last item relative to that is kind of an update on the ARP funds and the, and the, and the applications for county ARP funds. We got an update at the heritage board relative to their negative operating balances since we provided them with a million dollars last year to, to offset operational shortfalls and a part of the conversation at that meeting was relative to the fact that I don't know if we had, earlier that day had a meeting and come up with a really good idea relative to how we were going to use the ARP funds and how we were going to distribute that through the county and how we're going to address, you know, mental health issues and infrastructure issues and economic development issues. And then we had the conversation relative to the continuing operating losses of Heritage Living Center and the suggestion was that we not go forward with any awards relative to ARPA until we know in final what we're going to have to pay out of pocket from the county to, to offset those operational losses.
Currently, their operational losses at 564,000 after we gave them the million.
So that's basically a quarter.
Yes, that's a quarter, yep.
And, and we're, we're still open for 54 beds. We're down to 27 residents. The mandate went effect last Thursday. There was potential for three employees to be fired because they didn't want to fill out an exempt form or take the vaccine. It's beyond dire to me. It's just mind-boggling.
The unfortunate part here, you know, is, you know, I don't see this rapidly changing anytime soon, so it's very frustrating. And yes, I understand that, you know, much of it was created by COVID. One positive silver lining in it, the cottages are back up, almost 100% occupied. The bad news is the manor, which is the assisted living, is under 50%, roughly 50%. And then, of course, the nursing home is under 50%. So we're, we've got a serious cash flow problem and we're not in a position to do anything but cover it. The unfortunate part is, is like Jeff said, we had all, all these great ideas with ARP funds, but it probably would be prudent to lay those aside for a while until we figure out exactly how much money might have to keep the boat afloat.
Legislatively, it's proposed in 2025 to make the base pay at nursing homes, $25 an hour. Well, one of the board members commented, if you go to the base pay at $25 an hour, how can anybody afford nursing care? Because that's for whatever the lowest salary is. And my comment was by 2025, there's going to be all kinds of nursing homes that won't even have their doors open. And I read a really interesting article this last, I, no, I listened to a really interesting podcast this last week and this put in better perspective for me that inflation and unemployment, the way they were calculated, it was changed in the 1990s. And so currently, our inflation rate is at 3%, but if you calculate it, what they took out in the 1990s were people that had been looking for a long time, they're underemployed, or people that have just decided they're not going to work. They don't include those anymore in the numbers. If you put all those back in, our inflation rate, or our unemployment rate right now in the U.S. is 25%. That explains to me why we don't have workers.
Yeah, the other positive of all the, all this, I guess, so you could look at it is, you know, we're grateful we have ARP funding. If we didn't have ARP funding, we would be low, using the local taxpayer dollars to cover this. That marginally makes it better for me. It's still, it's still not good. I think it's time, and Jeff and I had a little conversation earlier about this, I think it's time that this board needs to basically make a statement to the Heritage Campus Board and the management company that these, these losses are not acceptable, that things need to change.
We've said that for years.
Well, and then, and Sharon and I have done that at the campus board, but it just, I think it needs to be more forceful. The message isn't, I won't say the message isn't resonating, but the sense of urgency doesn't seem to be there.
Well, we have the ability to dissolve that board and form a new one. Do you think it's going to be anywhere near that?
Well, if, if you got to that point, the problem is, then you're, then you're going to have to change the structure of how Heritage is operated, which means you'll bring it back under the county board, which opens up a whole nother set of issues you're going to have to deal with. And I'm not so sure that's, that's a good way to go. I don't know if that, that puts us in a better position or not, but we have thought about that.
I think relative to, and, and my point for bringing it up today was simply to say, I think that this discussion of ARP funds, we want to take that committee conversation that we had and bring that forward to the work session next week so everybody kind of has an idea to see those numbers and take a look at that and feel, think about that, but also kind of feel their way into, are we at the point where we want to take and distribute those funds, knowing that we're on the hook for operational losses relative to Heritage, or do we want to hold on those funds until we, until that situation stabilizes? And I think having that conversation at a work session makes a lot of sense. My direction from the ARP committee was to contact all of the applicants and, you know, part of our proposal was relative to providing a partial grant award rather than a full of grant award and to find out if that worked for people or didn't work for people. So I would still try to do that between now and next Tuesday.
I think of our original vision for those ARP funds was to use it in areas that have long-lasting effect for the county.
And we came up with a really good recommendation.
This is just the Band-Aid thing for, that's too bad.
And I do question, they know we have to cover this.
Yeah.
And so when, when Dave says he's not sure the urgency has quite kicked in, I, I question, because they know we have to cover this.
Yeah, because I, I get frustrated, the standpoint, some of these conversations have occurred six months to a year ago.
Yeah.
And some of the things that were discussed in that just don't seem to happen, or they don't seem to get put in play well. Then you're six months further down the road and you're scratching your head saying, "Well, why wasn't this done six months ago when we first discussed it? Maybe it would have made a difference. Maybe it wouldn't have, but you don't know if you don't do it." And so it, it just gets frustrating because there doesn't seem to be a sense of urgency there. And I think that's the frustration in some of the conversations we had earlier, is this entity, you know, better off in private hands than government hands? Government moves slow, super slow. And by the time you identify a problem, by the time you start to react to the problem, and then by the time you actually get somewhere where you're making progress on the problem, a year can pass by. That's too slow for business, especially business where you're talking, you know, five to nine million dollar a year business. You bleed money real fast when you don't do it right.
Yeah, when there's, when there's easy money, it takes the urgency out of it.
Right. And it's a one-way street. I mean, if it was doing well, that money doesn't come back to the county taxpayer at all. But it sure goes the other way.
They got bailed out a million, they said, "Well, there's more to go."
Yeah. So I think the modus operandi, obviously, as Minister Cadwell said, we need to, we need to push hard, get to the point where we can exercise the brokerage agreement, you know, lay low with the ARP funds for a while to see exactly what has to be done and then hopefully we'll get some clarity in a month or two.
I hope to have an update for you next week at the, you can't not talk about the Heritage Broker, Brokerage Agreement and the ARP funds because of the, of this uncertainty relative to the operation of Heritage Living Center as it is right now. So I hope to have an update for you on Tuesday and it'll probably be a big section of that work session.
And what frustrates, one thing that really frustrates me also, not only were Heritage at financially, but the committee came up with a really good plan of distributing money to affect organizations throughout the entire county that would have lasting effect.
It's the tail waving the dog right now and I guess, mentioned it earlier way back, you feel like you have one hand shackled behind your back and it's holding, seems like it's holding, holding the rest of the county back. So that's where it's at with that.
So do, do we need a motion for Jeff to dra, draft a letter from the board or is it just consensus?
I would actually have us carry that forward to next week when we have more and then, and I, I could bring a draft letter to the board next week and then you guys can approve it on the 15th if you want me to send it or not.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, I'll bring a draft letter and we'll have those two items on the work session for next week.
Okay, thank you.
The, the questions relative to changing the structure or rescinding or doing this, I, I don't think we want to address any of that as we're trying to settle the authority of the ability to sell the property and the relationships right now. I think it's a good question and it may be a long-term question, but it's probably a moot question if we get to the point of, of having a successful search for the brokerage.
All right. So you want me to keep rolling?
That was, that was the end of my, that was the end of my report unless there are other items that people want to see on the work session for next week.
Mississippi Headwaters, one water plant, one shed, one watershed, one plant memorandum of agreement and the work plan has to be approved by the end of February. So do we want anybody from, like say Zach or somebody from Soylent Water to come and give a presentation next week? And then I'm hoping that Jonathan has looked through the MOA and signed off on it so we could vote on that.
Who is my, who is our primary contact to get materials and?
Zach from Beltrami County has been a lot of it and then Crystal from our local Soylent Water. But Zach in Beltrami County is a fiscal agent.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll contact them and see if we can get the materials and if one of them's available Tuesday next week so that we have it on the agenda for the 15th for decision.
Okay, perfect. All righty, if there's nothing else, then yes, if you want to do committee reports.
The only other one I had, HLGC is moving along. We've been having our meetings there. They possibly could be looking at a, an open house in the next few months and then possibly some other type of event in the summer, once the summer residents get back in, back in the area. It would be kind of nice too, but yeah, it's progressing, progressing pretty well. She, every, every month, she seems to be getting more contacts. So I think once we get the word out there that it's, it's up and fully functional, we're still waiting on a few, a few items to show up to finish it off, but.
The hangers.
Just seeing to see how, how the open house goes and how the summer event goes and how people respond to it.
And that's the hanger?
Yep, the hanger. And other than that, I had a Northwest Emergency Communication Board meeting, but nothing, nothing of any super importance there.
Tom?
Yeah, to get you guys a regional library. We do have a new director now. Her name is Melissa Watley. She began on January 18th. Also, the library board did approve the use of some of their reserve money, 52,000, for the local library to update her HVAC. Normally, that would be an expense that the city would do because it's a city-owned building, but the need is now and they didn't have it in their 2022 budget, so we approved the money for that. And at the same time, related to that, we also approved a, a policy with a form for capital money to be spent on these kind of things because there's a lot of reserves. I think we have, oh, they got about 4.2 million in money market accounts, but we've already established that we're going to have 2 million for, you know, reserves just for backup money, but, so there's about 2 million available. So we're getting started on spending it down. We did approve, you know, like the Prime River Library, it's leased, but we did approve, I think it was 11,000 for them to upgrade their furniture and stuff like that, so we're finding ways to use it.
I've noticed that the new books are a different selection in the Park Rapids Library than were purchased before. Who would I contact about that?
I would Jordy Socks.
Okay. Are you, are you done?
Yep.
Okay, Tom and I had a Mahabhi meeting last Friday and there really wasn't, it was just business as usual. I had a Prime West compliance and data privacy. I'm on their committee. Two things I thought you found, would find interesting, there's 350 reports, regulatory reporting that Prime West does every year and they, we started asking questions and they said it's really frustrating, they're required to do all this and then they get in a meeting with DHS and they'll refer back to one of their reports and DHS doesn't know what the report is nor has it been read and yet they're requiring it. And then there's 1,181 regulatory communication bulletins that are required every, every year. They meet weekly to review. They figure it takes a group of people that are 20, 10 hours a week to do this and the list just keeps growing. So that's really frustrating. The thing I, I'm going to actually read something. We had, Dan and I participated in an emergency board meeting for Prime West last week. Prime West is going to be suing DHS and I want to get the wording correctly, so I'm going to read the talking points that the CEO, Jim, prepared. So what their question is the county-based, county authority under existing law because DHS, they see violates the Minnesota statute in two ways. First, the RFP indicates that DHS has already decided that county-based plans will not be the single plan in each member county previously and according to the statute, we believe that we have the right to choose which plans we want in the county. As described above, Minnesota statute expressively requires DHS to terminate private plans in counties that have elected to provide their own services. And secondly, the RFP signals that DHS will not accept any input as required by the statute. The statute requires that when the state engages in procurement, the county board must have an opportunity to review each proposal and work with the DHS commissioner to improve it prior to the approval of the contract. the county board must have an opportunity to review each proposal and work with the DHS commissioner to improve it prior to the approval of the contract, as well as to recommend a maximum number of participating health plans for the county. And then it lists the Minnesota statute, DHS already has decided that every county will have more than one plan without taking county input. So basically, the lawsuit is about counties having the, the right and ability that's already defined in Minnesota statute to make decisions for the people that live within our county as to who we want to cover for insurance. And so Prime Health, or, excuse me, Prime West, the attorney fees will be covered through the Prime West coffers. And that's all I know. Last time, the procurement, this was an issue last time, and they had talked about it for almost a year, and DHS canceled the procurement, so there, that was two years ago. So DHS is doing the same thing this time, trying to get this pushed through. But the RFPs are due in February and April. It could take the membership from fifty-four thousand down to around ten. It's, it would be huge plus. The potential would be for our social services to have, instead of having to deal with just Prime West, having to deal with maybe four different insurance companies. So it would cost us a lot, not only in changes of service, but also staff time. But it, basically, it takes away the right of the county to decide. So I'll keep you tuned.
Thank you.
Was there a cap on that dollar bill? Was there something about a cap on the dollar bill?
Oh, for attorneys? It's fifty-three thousand.
Just so you're aware.
Yep.
Dan, do you have any committee reports?
Okay, so at the beginning, I've mentioned before, they have an ordinance, City of Parker Rapids has an ordinance relating only paraphernalia that took place in the month of January. I'm just trying to figure out the dates here, but I think it was on, last one was Tuesday, wasn't it Tuesday? So they enacted this ordinance, had a public hearing, received their comments, the second meeting, the second Tuesday meeting, they were going to vote on it, they received some pros and cons, and the board felt that it would be best to maybe gather some more information and put it back in the public hearing again. So we keep you up to date on that. And then Northwest Juvenile Training Center had the meeting last Thursday, went well, financially, we're doing okay. We get a great director out there, and board members that are active. And then Hubbard and Prevention, still coalition executive meetings, trying to reach out to more schools to develop a more collaboration with working together. We have the information, they have their system, should all agree, but trying to, trying to wait, work together more closely for the common good of our county and its residents. I think that's it.
If I could just add to what Dan added for the city council, on 2/8 at 5:30 will be the work session. 2:20 to 6 o'clock will be the first hearing, and the reading of the ordinance. And then 3/8 at 6 o'clock will be the second hearing, and hopefully by then, the council will feel comfortable voting on it. I would just encourage you, all of us, to reach out to council members, because this is something we've talked about doing in the county, and to let the council members know how you feel about this. So this is about selling drug paraphernalia within the city limits.
I believe Jonathan has that downstairs. I know you're aware of it at least. No comment over there. You going to bring up Extension?
Or would you like to?
No, I wasn't there.
Do you have a new member?
Hello?
Sue Tompkins is a new member?
We have a new member, yes.
Yay, Sue!
Thank you very much for your service and your continued service for the next decade. No, we need, we need, I can comment on Sue, we need more life, we need more representation from outside the, or from within the county, but different entities that Sue represents, I think it's a positive asset. She is a positive asset to the organization and the youth development within the county. That's the only part I can say, you were at the meeting.
Yep, Sue had a lot of good contributions to the meeting. I had some contacts that I think Tara was interested in helping her do her, her job and stuff like that. So I think it'll be a great addition.
How was Mary Jo's presentation? How, how's things going there?
Seemed to be fine, yeah. She's excited about getting involved again and, and with the kids and everything. I don't have my notes up for that yet, but.
One other thing, too, is that anybody who's watching the stream, and I encourage everybody to attend their local caucuses tonight, and that's where grassroots government begins.
And also, the MRC has a meeting, it's by Zoom only next Monday from 10 to 1. I will be participating. But I have another meeting that starts at 11, so I will only be on the first hour.
And let's see, then there's me, if you're done, Dan?
I am, this is the chair.
Had a manager's meeting, we went over the committee list, kind of talked about who is going to be responsible for the members on certain committees and stuff like that, who would keep us updated. Touched on strategic planning, the video manager streaming stuff here, and the ARP funds, in which we did have the meeting then with the ARP committee after that. And like we said, we had some good, good ideas, but those are all on hold now. Let's see. HRDC, I've had a couple of meetings there the last couple of weeks. We're looking at hiring a new executive director, that's going well. We did some interviews yesterday, and the committee, kind of like when we were choosing an administrator, and we all came up with the same person that we thought would serve us well. Same thing with the HRDC, one candidate stood out, and we offered him the job. I don't know if he's accepted it yet, because this was last night and we got done. Let's see, Healthy Hubbard County, had a meeting there. Talked about the COVID numbers and the variants, current numbers were reviewed. Cases are increasing in Hubbard County, similar to the entire state positivity, positivity rate remains high. Vaccinations, they're again, continue to offer walk-in vaccines every week, Tuesdays from nine to 11. Hospital update, the COVID census is lower at this time, ER is still busy testing. Staffing is a concern with the recent increase in cases and illness. Community health update, home visits and case loads are down through 2021 due to pandemic restrictions. Hoping to increase case loads and referrals this year. WIC, physical presence waiver was continued through April of this year, case loads, case loads remain steady. A new public health nurse, WIC coordinator started on 110. And then the health, community health survey, I did that myself at this point of our meeting. They had received over 500 responses, and the survey will be, well, I guess the survey is not available anymore. Mississippi Headwaters Board had a meeting there. I was voted in as the chair of that board. Through our press releases, which I see them once in a while in the papers, I kind of wish that the local papers would, I mean, we, we send all the papers and news release. I kind of wish that they would all publish them. Sent a letter to Betty McCollin. There's some legislation going through that were, that affects the Mississippi, and the Mississippi Headwaters Board has the jurisdiction over the first 400 miles. So we're concerned about how that might affect our authority. So we sent a letter to, to Betty, because she's a part of the bill. Of course, went through the budget, and gonna have a budget meeting, committee meeting and stuff like that. Had the executive director's report, and there again, we had the evaluation for him. Northwest Juvenile.
Surveying and trans, one again, thank you.
Dan has, once again, voted chair on that. Doing very well financially and everything, got some quotes for replacing the roof there, or repairing the roof. Looking at 200 and, or 300,000 to do those. They can also, also do a, is that a pickleball court or a tennis court or basketball court? Both, this coming summer. Once again, the, had a, they've gone, I think I've said this before, they switched over to in-house food services, and they're getting some of the, the residents involved in that, and that's working out really well. They're saving money, plus the, the kids in that are getting involved, so it's, it's a good thing all the way around.
The other thing, just to add, with Ted's committee report is management style, that the department heads are now on the floor, whether it be evenings, weekends, and that is actually a real positive for the staff to see that their supervisors are actively involved in the positive relationships with the youth.
And they're mixing it up a little bit so that all the staff get a little bit of experience in all the departments there. I think that's a good thing, too.
Sorry.
It's okay. And I think, I believe that's about it. Is there anything else?
I just thought of something. The legislative session has started, and if anybody has an opinion about what you think should be done with the surplus, to contact your legislature and let them know.
I don't think I'm refunding some of the taxpayers.
That's not really in the cards. Do you want to know what they're spending it on? I can forward you an email.
Plan on it.
Actually, taxes too much, we should get it back.
Well, Minnesota's sixth highest in the nation.
Though we have some of the best roads.
And what is that? First part of March, isn't it?
And the higher-income people are moving out, and the lower-income people are moving in, so our taxes just keep going up.
You're going, Ted, or Tom?
Where?
To the legislative session, AMC at all?
Um, no, I wasn't really planning on going, I know March 2nd and 3rd.
Yeah, I would like to go, definitely like to go to Policy one in September, and of course, the end.
I don't plan on going.
So I sent, Denise sent an email out a week, 10 days ago, relative to the AMC legislative session on March 2nd and 3rd, asking anybody if they wanted to go. We were recommended to make rooming arrangements by today as the deadline.
Whereabouts is that again?
At the Intercontinental Hotel in St. Paul.
So currently, they have, they have St. Paul and Minneapolis have COVID restrictions, so if you're interested in going.
Kind of curious how they plan on doing the meeting with the legislature when they're zooming.
The, the meetings with the, with the representatives are up in the air. Meetings with the senators are on schedule because they're operating in person with the restrictions, but.
Yeah, because that, that was kind of my, you know, go all the way down there, and then you're not able to do that. I wouldn't be very happy about it. So maybe next time.
Invest that time and money, and then you can't speak to anybody.
Right. And I know that's, that's the frustration with, with some of the House representatives here, is they, they can't conduct normal business, and their constituents can't get in front of them very easily.
Is there anything else? What a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second?
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.